Silence followed by the flag salute.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call vote? No, excuse me, roll call members, I'll get this for you.
Dr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Hoff. Mr. Greenwood. Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Here.
Mr. Johnston. Mr. Francis. Mrs. McGinnis. Here, Mr. Cook.
Like to announce that we had an executive session this evening, right before this meeting to discuss legal issues, legal and personnel. If I could, Dr. Malloy, I would like to read three motions that we need added to the agenda. And appreciate, once I read them, we have a motion and a second to add these to the agenda. First, a motion to deny or approve grievance AAEA number two zero two one dash oh two. Second motion is motion to deny slash approve grievance AAEA number two zero two one dash oh three. And then I would like to read the motion that goes with, what's the actual number? In the personnel agenda, can you give that to me, Mr. Beardo? Act sixty-five, that's.
Uh, under new business fifteen B.
Fifteen B on the new business, this is the full motion. And stop me if I don't give everything I need to. Okay, motion to authorize the issuance of a statement of charges against Mr. Kenneth Margram, a professional employee extending an opportunity for a hearing under section one one two seven of the public school code of nineteen forty-nine as amended, and further authorize the board president and board secretary to sign same and serve notice upon the employee of such an entitlement to a hearing. In doing so, the board believes there is sufficient evidence supports its beliefs that a statement of charges should be issued to afford notice to the employee and an opportunity for a hearing. Motion is to approve the statement of charges. And to add it to the, the motion, approving the statement charges and, and I am asking that I need a motion to add these three items to the agenda. I'll make that motion. Sorry. Sir, a second? Kelly was first, I'll make the second. Thank you. And those in favor, do we need a roll call in this? Okay, those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. At this point, we have a special presentation by Dave Scott from Young Oaks Browning Company.
Dave Scott from Young Oaks Brown with the partners on this account. I've done it for a number of years, I know some of you are new, but I appreciate this opportunity to make a brief presentation. And again, I know auditing is very exciting, so I know you'll be very excited to make so. First of all, there should be two reports, I hope you got a copy of them. One of them is the annual report of the Altoona, Altoona, Pennsylvania for the year ended June thirty-two thousand twenty-one. If you would please just turn to page fourteen of that report. Again, it's the thicker one, it's the annual report. This is the financial report. Just give me a second there to turn to page number fourteen. Okay. If you look towards the left, there's a general fund, that's the main operating fund, if you look towards the bottom, what we always talk about is the fund balance, the fund balance, which is as of June thirty-two thousand twenty-one, at that date, the fund balance is twenty-five million dollars here at the district. As you can also see towards the bottom, there's committed funds of fourteen point nine million for future school operations and debt service. And you can see also that the unassigned fund balance is nine million dollars, so that's an important figure, like people like to talk about the fund balance. Does anybody have a question on the balance sheet? Again, a balance sheet is nothing more than a snapshot of the assets liabilities and fund balance or equity of the school district, guys have that date. That's really what that relates to. Okay, turn to page sixteen. If you turn to page sixteen, it's called the statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balance. This is revenues and expenditures, this is like a profit law statement of a business. Again, you look to the left under general fund, you look towards the bottom, there's a net change, probably about three lines up from the bottom, it says at five point two million dollars approximately a deficit. So again, we had a deficit of five point two million dollars, and that include, that included the a six hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollar transfer to the cap reserve fund for capital improvements in the future. So I wanted to mention that. And then one thing I always mentioned, again, I know I, I probably repeat myself every time I present this, I to the, to the school board here, but I do this everywhere, is the biggest issue I think is, again, I'm a numbers guy, is the net pension liability, we always talk about that, but the, the GASB or accounting standards, which creates, tells, challenges, how do we do these statements? They're all the same, every school district should be presented the same way. They force us to carve out a portion of the PSE or tax unfunded pension liability, okay? So the carve out for the Altoona School, every district gets this, the carve out, or your slice of that liability is a little, almost hundred sixty-five million dollars basically, so again, your carve out of that unfunded pension liability is about a hundred sixty-five million dollars. It, it, that's just for information, I just give you that for informational purposes. But basically, just for your information too, you contributed seventeen million dollars during the fiscal year twenty twenty-one to that pension plan. So again, the district contributed seventeen million, has not done a whole thing lot to solve the problem, because we're still very well underfunded, and that liability is still growing somewhat. So again, I'd just like to mention that just for informational purposes though. And again, just for your information, is that the district contributes about thirty-five percent of salary to that worth that, that's part of that seventeen million. Even though you get reimbursed half of that amount from the state, still, you're contributing thirty-five percent to that defined benefit pension plan. So again, I know that, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it's not your, it's, it's really state legislature, but I'm just saying, it's just a real issue with districts, but you think about, that's quite a large dollar amount of funding that has to go towards. I like to mention that, really, it is, it's. No, it's not, no. So, and again, there's lots of reasons why it happened, I could probably sit here for about a half hour and tell you why, but I won't bore you. The other one I want to mention, any, any question on that report, I'm gonna go to the next report, any question on that one? Okay, the next report is, it's called Altoona School, Altoona, Pennsylvania, Audit's Report on Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, Compliance, and Internal Control. This is what we call a single audit. It's an audit because of federal funds. Anytime any government gets more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures, then we have to do a single audit, a separate audit, completely separate audit. And if you go to page of that report, you go to page eight to the right, page eight, eight has two pages to it, left and right, you want to go to the right. It has a listing of all the federal funds here at the school district. The total federal funds here were thirteen point one million dollars. And we audited out of that about three point four million of it. There's two programs we aud, we did a special audit of, we do a special audit of internal control and that you comply with federal laws and regulations for this funding. And again, that was the education stabilization, stabilization fund and the coronavirus relief fund. But basically, it deals with COVID nineteen and all the funds that have been funneled and will be funneled to this district like all other districts around the country because of COVID nineteen. And again, there were no audit findings related to this funding there, so I want to make that very clear, there are no audit findings at all. The only audit finding we had was if you go to page eleven, what was the athletic fund, that there was an issue with cash receipts. And again, I, I understand it has been addressed, but again, there was one audit finding which dealt with the financial statements here. And again, it was the athletic fund and it dealt with a cash receipt, so again, that's on page eleven. And only other thing I wanted to mention on the other report that I just went over, I did want to go to page seventy-nine on the other, the thicker report again. You go to page seventy-nine, one thing I do want to mention here, to try to clarify some things. If you go to page seventy-nine of that thicker report, the one I did previously to this one, if you go to the third column to the right, call it actual budgetary bound, that basis. This is the actual expenditures and so forth. One thing I wanted to mention here, if you look at, this is the budget actual. If you look, your revenues minus expenditures, really, you had an operating, positive operating amount of one point four million dollars here. Okay, if you look at that column called actual budgetary basis on page seventy-nine of the thicker report, again, if you look at that column, it says definitely revenue, your revenues were more than your expenditures by one four point four million dollars. But the problem is, if you look down there below, you can see where debt service was seven million dollars, so really, the debt service outside, isn't really, I don't consider it operating, but basically, I would say debt service is non-operating expenditure. But again, you can see where operation wise, we are positive, but with debt service seven million dollars, that throws into the deficit of five point two million. So I just wanted to mention that. So does anybody have any questions for me, these reports, anything at all? Thanks a lot. I never get too many questions, take it easy.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, special presentation, follow.
Good evening, January, as you know, is school director's month. And tonight, we want to honor you, our school directors, for your dedication, time, commitment to Altoona area school district students. We extend a warm welcome to our newest board members, Mr. Cook, Mr. Mignon, Mrs. McGinnis, and Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Johnson has served ten years to date, Mrs. Erwin Adams has served four years to date. Dr. Malloy and Mr. Hoff have each served two years to date, and Mr. Francis is hanging in there with us at twenty-six years subservice to date. School directors are key decision makers on issues such as school safety and security, budgeting, policy, hiring, and textbooks. Many devote an average of six to ten hours per month on school business. While the challenges of the pandemic have shifted priorities at times, school directors continue to keep focus on school funding as a top concern for facing public schools. Each of you have been given a small token here this evening from the administration and members of the school district. It is a student created mug out of our ceramics class, and inside you'll find a, a couple extra little tokens. In addition to that, you'll also find from the AAEA, a small token of their appreciation. This is just one example of how our students excel in the classroom and the role you have, you have played in ensuring an education for students in the areas of arts, academics, and athletics. So for your efforts and for your time, we just wanted to say thank you this evening from all of us, thank you.
Great. At this time, we will have hearing from citizens, any citizen wishing to address the board, please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and you would have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Laird, I live at eleven fifteen twentieth Avenue in Altoona. Tonight, I'm here as the parent of a McCallum Heights third grader and as the advocacy chair for the McCallum Heights PTA. The issue I would like to address, and I am happy to see that it is in the agenda, is regarding facilities and maintenance, specifically the replacement of windows, doors, and caulking in four of our district's elementary schools. This topic garnered extensive discussion at last month's meeting, during which it was identified as the biggest facility issue in this district at this time. My concern is that the board does not appear to be in complete agreement as to the necessity or to the scope of this project. Therefore, McCallum Heights would like to weigh in, the parents, students, and staff of McCallum Heights. We currently house two hundred eighty-six students and approximately forty-two staff members, including teachers, aides, cafeteria workers, nurses, office staff, and custodians. Each of these individuals deserves to learn and to work in an environment which is safe, secure, and up to date. McCallum Heights prides itself on the quality of education that it provides to these two hundred eighty-six students. But one thing that all educators should know is that we can only reach our potential if our basic needs are met. I would categorize well-constructed, well-maintained, well-insulated, and well-secured facilities to be a basic need for learners, educators, and facility staff. As the funding source for this project has already been identified and secured, I urge the board to move forward with our plan to address these facility needs in their entirety. The argument that we should be conservative in our assessment and efforts to ameliorate this issue brought forth by a sole board member in opposition is simply putting a Band-Aid on a problem that will continue to present itself and in fact will worsen over time. Interestingly, during last month's meeting, the same sole member in opposition went on to state when discussing the replacement of lights at Mansion Park, and I'm summarizing here, I'm not quoting, that it is foolish to put a Band-Aid on an issue when it is clear that complete replacement is necessary. It should be the priority of this board and all its members to address needs as they're identified, not to table them until they become an emergency, especially when it become, when it concerns the quality of our children's learning environments. McCallum Heights building principal, Mrs. Agnew welcomes any board member to the facility to complete assessments that will move this plan forward, although it kind of looks like that's already taken place. On a final note, I would like to thank all board members for taking on or continuing their leadership role during this time of extreme unrest. Decision-making during a pandemic, I have learned from experience, is a thankless task and has very obviously not been taken lightly by this board. I recognize that under the circumstances, any discourse or decision has the potential to be polarizing, but it's only by pulling together as a community that we can do right by our children and achieve great things, thank you.
Thank you. So there anyone else?
How's everybody doing tonight? So, two things I wanted to discuss that I was concerned about, one was the athletics. So, a few years ago, maybe earlier than that, I had a discussion in regards to possibly expanding the volleyball team instead of just having one in the junior high for seventh and eighth grade, that we could possibly expand that to have two. This year, I learned that they made an exception and offered three girls' basketball teams, which I'm not sure why we can make the exception for basketball, but we can't make that exception for volleyball when we had fifty, sixty girls try out. Moving on. So my seventh grader brought home a book from her classroom library, and I'd like to read you a paragraph. "I wish everybody's mother was a dyke." "I heard mama murmuring softly to Kristen mama, then I heard her laugh." "Kristen makes her laugh, I guess, I heard her say, 'This is going to be hard.'" "I felt my own self getting hard, stupid, stupid me, it hurts sometimes when I get hard." Would you like me to continue? Like, "I'm going to explode down there." "Angie, I think about her sometimes when I'm, you know, her chest is pretty big." "My thing started pushing against my bathing trunks." "I tried to stop thinking about Angie's breasts." "Raphael flashed across my brain, stupid, stupid Raphael, how come I'm thinking about him, faggot?" "Angie, Angie, Angie, mama and Kristen, Angie, if only my tongue hadn't gotten all thick when that woman answered." "Maybe I'd be on my way over there now." "Never even kissed a girl, I heard mama cough, and I moved my thing so it no longer made my bathing suit trunk stick out." "Girls can hide it." That's just a paragraph from her school library. Now, obviously, it's been said that parents shouldn't have a decision in our kids' curriculum, but you board members approved this book to be in their classroom. I'm not sure who's evaluating these or who's choosing exactly for them to be in there, but my discussion with the teacher and principal, they're just going off of what they're given. So it's every one of you as a board member approving this curriculum. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, did we get your name, ma'am? And address?
Sorry, Crystal Oaks, Altoona, my address is listed on the sign and sheet.
Dr. Malloy, can I just reply to this, Oaks?
Yes.
Just wanted to touch base, I did speak with both Ms. Bogwell, Ms. Ms. Hoven, your child's teacher. We are aware of all of the reading workshop books and are currently reviewing all of those content of both the junior high school and the high school. There are high-interest books that have been identified for our students. At any point, if a student is uncomfortable with the content and the appropriateness of that content or a family member, they can abandon that book at any point in time. This in particular, the author, there was an author study that was completed, and I believe your daughter chose that author, and then they had to read two books within that author's realm. So it is an author of, of young teen literature that does contain some adult themes, and we are, we are currently reviewing those to make sure all of those books were read by our, our English staff prior to. Not, not every book by every teacher, but every book that we adopted was read and recommended for approval by our board when we adopted reading workshops. So I assure you that we are going to re-review all of the titles. And then any book, once again, moving forward, that a student or a parent is, is not comfortable with, they have the option of abandoning for another book within the library or their own book of that choice within that genre.
Well, I mean, the whole, but my only issue is, is that, how can I say? It brought conversations that I wasn't expecting. Therefore, if I would have been aware, aware of the content of the book, I could have chose to say, no, you can't read that, or, okay, I'm ready for that conversation, we can have that. However, this author, just, you know, how they add a chapter in from other books that they have, another paragraph that she writes, they know.
Excuse me, ma'am, could you perhaps meet with Mr. Hatch later on and discuss this and we can move on, I, I see the importance that you're bringing out, but we, we do plan to address it through the process that we have.
And I'd be happy to set up facilitated meeting with you.
That, that's fine, Mr. Hatch, I appreciate it, like I said, I just, I think the author should be pulled completely, I don't see how any buddy could think this is appropriate for a twelve, thirteen-year-old to read in, in school without a parent's consent.
Okay.
I understand.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board?
Kelly Bowers, um, okay, so I do believe it was six or seven years ago that I was working in the district and they were really getting ahead and getting on the CPI training for all the special ed teachers, SEAs, such like that. And I had many conversations with Mr. Hatch and Dr. Prieto and other administrators that were here about bringing that training to mainstream teachers as well. Because with that training, it doesn't just protect children, it protects the teachers also whenever something happens and they have to engage and use that, put that training into effect. I am a huge supporter of this because our classrooms house anywhere from two to fifteen students with IEPs and special needs. And our mainstream teachers are just that mainstream teachers. And they need the resources such as the CPI training so that if there is an altercation or such and they have to step in, they can, because from what I'm aware of, I was told that it's still this, if you're not CPI trained and there's an issue occurring, you have to step back from that issue and allow someone with CPI training to actually get in the middle of an altercation or such between students and everything. I think that that puts the district at liability, I think that puts teachers at liability. And if I was a mainstream teacher, I would really want this training because here I am as a parent saying, y'all really need to check into this and push for it, because it saves you as much as it saves the district, and you're able to actually help out more in situations instead of waiting for, I think it's nurses are trained in CPI training, anyone who is special ed and principals and guidance counselors. I know from working in a building, there was a lot of times where those people weren't available. So, but there was multiple teachers that were available, but they could not do anything legally to help the situation, we had to wait for someone who was trained. So I would highly suggest that, if you could, to please start train, training our mainstream teachers as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to item number four, which is resolution of the board of directors pertaining to the the tax rate, the, following the inflation index. Is there a motion on that? This is not approving a tax rate, this is just saying that we're required annually to have this resolution presented to us saying that we would not tax beyond it if we decide to implement a tax rate. Okay. So we would need a motion, sir, a second? Ron, seconds, further discussion?
Just one second, if. Prove this. Budgets not even say yet, we don't know what we need or what we're gonna do. We have, we, we can go back and we need a tax increase beyond, you know, beyond what we, the exception.
We, we are not eligible for the referendum exceptions this year. We're not, we're not eligible, so this is all, this is the limit.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye. Okay, item number five, we have the approval of the twelve-six-twenty-one regular school board minutes. B, we have the approval of the twelve-six-twenty-one reorganization meeting minutes. C, we have approval of the one-three-twenty-two special school board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those? Val, is there a second? Discussion? Those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye. Finance. I'm going to go through all of these, if any you would like to vote on separately, please indicate. We have under finance, A, list of payments, B, financial reports, C, an honorarium, D, financial statements and single audit that Mr. Scott presented, E, software upgrade agreement, F, PlanCon Part K, project refinancing issuance of general obligation bonds, G, PlanCon Part K, project refan, refinancing issue of more additional bonds. Susan? Is there, am I missing? The, the. Change orders number six? Am I missing something? It's the P two G? There you go. Thank you. Okay, so under finance, we have items A, B, C, D, E, and F. Any you'd like to vote on separate? Is there a motion then for approval of those items?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second, second by Dave, further discussion?
I have a question on payment one-two-three-four-two-nine. Administrator, administrator in charge for Chambersburg and Corlau. It's adminis. Yeah. Yeah. Right under it, October, November, there's, there's travel in that. And then underneath it says travel, October, November.
That's local travel, the October, November is local travel.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, for all those items, those in agreement, respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, policy, item number seven. This is the final reading on policy two-two-seven-point-one, drug and alcohol testing for student athletes. Is there a motion for approval? I'll make that motion, is there a second? Ron, seconds, discussion? Ron seconds, discussion? Hearing none, those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Eight, education, we have A, the P two G grant. B, hiring of a special education consultant. C. Would be the elementary ski club. D, an elementary field trip. Actually filled trips, I'm sorry. E would be the memorandum of agreement with, uh, Penn State. Uh, College of Education, Special Ed Field Experience. F, a doctoral study by, uh, Janik Archinsky out of Slippery Rock. G, volunteer approval. H, Pima District Six Jazz Festival two thousand twenty-two. I, secondary field trips. J, the expulsion of. Let's see, it looks like two, two students. K, extended school year for summer two thousand twenty-two. L, and memorandum of understanding with Drexel University. M, new course approval, African American history. Okay, a lot of items. Anyone who vote on separate? Hearing none, is there a motion for approval of those items? I'll make that move. Is there a second? Ron seconds, discussion?
Can, can you just explain what the special education consultant is for?
And we have the, uh, and to ensure that we have the, the proper supports in place and we created the room the way we need to to make sure that it meets the needs of those high need students.
Is that the only school will be having one of those classrooms or will they?
The junior high also. But at this situation, it, it, at this current time, we're, we're reasonably happy with how the junior highs progressing. You feel pretty strong. But we definitely wanna, wanna get the professional input on how to make sure we meet all the needs and the Logan. And, and.
Would anybody from the IU or anyone local that could do this?
This person was recommended by the solicitor to ensure that, that he would have, um, that he would have the proper expertise to handle it.
And, and I, I will say that during my day, Andy Klein. Uh, provided consulting services to, uh, our district and many others and I, I would have to say. His expertise is, uh. Beyond compare, you know, he, he just has. A, a real, he's got a lot of experience in education and special education and. He not only provides recommendations that make our programs better. But it also provides legal protection because it keeps you out of trouble. And, uh, special ed lawsuits are very, very expensive. And, uh, I, I think this is taking a, a good step forward and getting this done the right way.
His, uh, his background is that he's been a, a professor, but he was also a special ed hearing officer. Of almost eighteen years, had close to twelve hundred cases. Uh, he is a expert witness. In special education administrative hearings, state court, federal court. Actually, he was an expert witness for the district in a, a, a federal case many years ago. He was also an expert witness in, in a case for the career center. Probably about ten, ten years ago as well. He's done work off and on for this, for this district is going. Back as far as, uh. Uh, Dr. Malloy and, uh, Doc, Dr. Murray. So, I mean, he has familiarity with the district. But he is well received by both parents, uh, attorneys and, uh, district counsel as well.
Look, Brad, on the expulsion. Uh, is there something, a mechanism in place to, to see how this young lady is doing the second, uh, the second expulsion? The elementary child, is, is someone keeping an eye on her?
Sure, we, we've actually, we've already moved to, that student's already enrolled in our elementary ACA program. Um, we, the, the driver here was to get the family involved in clinical based counseling. And that was accomplished with this, with this process. Um, there have been noticeable significant issues. Within the family dynamic and, uh, this, this furthered that process very quickly.
Good.
Um, so we, we have, she's still with us.
Okay, good, thank you.
Um, I just asked Brad maybe provide some context for that course that's being added. Because that is a sort of a controversial issue, but I think if we shine some light on it, it isn't so controversial.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So we were, um, we were approached last year, uh, by a group of students, um, led by one young lady at our high school. And we began discussion about the need and for the, uh, the possibility. Of expanding our curriculum to include an African American history course. Uh, through investigation and collaboration with a number of people, including, uh, professors at Penn State Altoona. And other school districts that do offer similar courses, uh, we began the process of, of writing that course, aligning it. With state standards and eligible content. We had a, uh. A teacher who was, was very excited about the opportunity of writing that course and worked diligently over the summer to do so. Uh, we clarified things in the fall, looked at resources, primary text and other, other items and resources that would be utilized to supplement the course. Also advertise the course to our students to offer it beginning, uh, second semester of the two thousand twenty-two school year. So we did have thirty-seven, Mr. Neely. With, I believe it was thirty-seven to thirty-eight. Pardon me, up to forty-four, we had forty-four students, uh, had an interest in, in choosing as an elective. Uh, for the second half of this school year, so we are gonna be able to accommodate a little over half of those students. And then reserve that elective for the remaining students in the fall and then obviously in the spring of next school year, so it will become. Part of our, uh, part of our department. Anytime we have an interest from a staff member or a student to explore expansion curriculum. Uh, we, we do our due diligence and vet, you know, that course and what it would look like. Uh, we collaborated with. Philadelphia Public School District who does require an African American history course as part of their graduation requirements. And, uh, we decided that we would like to offer this as an elective, um, much to the, uh. The happiness of, of a number of our students. So it's a six unit course, um, that will progress from the transatlantic slave trade. Up through and including, uh, modern day and contemporary African American history. So. Uh, once again, it, it is fully aligned with state standards and eligible content and we are very excited, uh, for the progress of, of the course.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? With, uh, all the items under that, uh, to vote on, uh, those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed? They're all carried. Okay, personnel, we only have one item there. Is there a motion for approval? Sir, second. Phil seconds, any discussion?
I, I have a couple of questions. Um, so we just implemented, I'm assuming the basketball leg is for. The sixth and seventh grade, like the weekend leg or?
It, it's for the sixth grade leg. Um, these were, these numbers are the same as they were when we originally proposed it. Will be in year two of the sixth grade leg. We have both a boys and a girls division. Um, the one thing I do wanna clarify, league coordinator, it, it is not a hundred dollars per game. Um, it comes out to approximately a two thousand dollar stipend, broken up over a hundred dollars per week. So when they coordinate the league for that week, typically it's multiple games, three, four, five games in a weekend. That would be the amount per, per day.
Okay, that was, that was one of my questions because I remember it being a stipend. But my other question was, last year, it was that it was gonna be like. Equivalent, like what we would bring in would be equivalent to what we were paying our workers. Do we have the numbers from that?
We had a positive balance at the end of last school year, um, based on the amount that we charge each team to enter the league. Uh, our coaches were, a lot of our expenses were built around initial startup costs with uniforms and other things. All the coaches are volunteers. None of them are paid. All of our uniforms got sponsored. Um, so we didn't have any outlay in terms of, of uniforms. It essentially are, are out, what we pay out is, is what we do to run the league. Uh, we charged three dollars per, per attendee of the league, had very good attendance, um, even during COVID times. Uh, and, and we definitely, we, we finished with a positive balance to start this school year on both the boys and the girl side.
Okay, cuz my, my question was, in going to some of these games. It seems like there's an excess number of workers at the games. So that's something that I'd like to look at and I guess my question was. Do we need a ticket seller and a ticket taker? Because I think in the Saturday games. They don't actually sit in the booth, they sit at a table right at the entrance. So could we eliminate one of those positions?
We, we can and depending on availability and I know I, I attended most of the Sunday games. Um, we did have one person that was that ticket taker and seller and they would sit right inside of the doors of the main gym. And they would do both at the same time. They would sell the ticket stamp or give a ticket, whatever it may be. So I, I, I think that is there if it's needed, but I, we've not seen the need for that and we've, we've, we're not over staffing. Um, the crowd control, we could probably reduce to one per game and we can make that recommendation. Last year when there were masking mandates and whatnot, it was, it was probably needed, um, just for those general reminders for folks. But being that we are in a different situation now, we can, that is one that we can definitely limit to.
Okay, uh, that, those were actually my two things because. I know for the junior high games, there are a lot of people on crowd control and there aren't that many students there. It's typically just parents. So. Uh, I don't think there's as much of a need for crowd control, I guess.
I will recommend to our athletic director that we, uh, that we limit that to one crowd control person, uh, for, for league events.
Okay.
Okay.
And what about, you'll ask about.
Ticket taker will be the same. Combine ticket taker seller, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions on that item? Okay, those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed? We have two other items under personnel and these would be the two grievances, uh, as presented by Dr. Prietal beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, the motion to deny slash approved grievance, A A E A number two zero two one dash O two. And the motion to deny slash approved grievance, A A E A number two zero two one dash O three. A. A yes is an approval of the grievance, a nay is denial of the grievance.
Okay, is there a motion on those two grievances? I'll make a motion that, uh, these be approved. Not approve that we vote on them.
Real quick, Carl, does, can the president make a motion? Or does it have to come from a, from a board member?
No, uh, the board president can in fact make a motion.
Right.
I mean, it is a best practice.
I, I, I just, I don't think, but I think if you do the rubber rules, I don't think they can, but that's okay. I'll make a motion, Frank.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll second the motion, but I guess my question is, what is the motion to deny the, the? Deny the grievances?
The administration is recommending that the board deny the grievance.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure based on what you said.
Yes, a yes would mean we deny it or no, we don't. Okay, any discussion on these? Should we do a roll call vote? Okay.
Motion is to deny both grievance wanted to.
Okay.
Yes.
So a yes means you agree to deny them, no, you don't. Okay, those in favor of denying these grievances respond by saying yes. Yes, those who. Don't want to deny the grievance, say no. Okay, they are denied.
Thank you.
Okay, student services, uh. Okay, under student services, a memorandum of understanding with child advocates of Blair County, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Business operations, uh, A are the SDA bus drivers that are listed there. B, transfer of funds. C, capital reserve list of payments. D, parent transportation contracts. E, Mets wage increase. Is there a motion on those items? And you wanna vote on separate, I should ask first. Is there a motion on those items? Is there a second? Okay, discussion. Those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Twelve. Facilities maintenance. Want to do these separate? Together? Upper, okay, first is the Mansion Park Stadium lighting. Is there emotion on that one? Is there a second? Discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
I do, what, is this for the proposal one? Yes.
So I wasn't at the facilities meeting. Um, but I briefly asked Eric about it, um, before the meeting and he showed me, I don't know, uh. Uh. What, what was it? What? Maybe. Yes.
Right, that's, that's the lunes, right, candles. Light is measured in candles.
Okay, so I guess my question is, it doesn't look like we're comparing apples to apples on these two bids, like. The, the Musco bid, proposal one is for six lights. If I'm understanding this correct, at sixty forty.
Yeah.
Proposal two is for six lights at fifty thirty. Proposal three is for four lights at fifty thirty. And then from TPK, they only bid on. Four poles.
Right.
So why, why aren't they, why, what, what, what did we ask them to give us and why aren't we comparing comparable? Jobs?
We asked for six pole systems. For sixty forty. Um, six pole system because that was deemed by the people we referred to and I asked Steve Parks about it. To get the proper coverage without a lot of overflow. The, with four poles, how you angle the lights, how you have to angle the lights to cover the area. Means we're basically gonna glare out anybody's living room. On either, on, on either side of the stadium because the lights have to s- basically splay out. To, to cover that area. Whereas with six poles, you can contain it, control it and guarantee that you're keeping it more reasonably on. On the actual area that needs to be lit.
So, so then why didn't TPK give us for six poles at sixty forty if that's what we asked for?
Qualite does not have any form of, um, of lighting control. Meaning that a qualite is a, is a spotlight. I mean, I'll also say it's basically a huge spotlight. They have bars of these things. They're very, very bright. And they send out a lot of light. And, but they don't have the control. That the Musco system has to control our light and to ensure it stays within certain parameters. Like if you were to go over. To the I M field with that Musco system, you look at, you look over top of it when the lights are on, it's dark. Because all the light is, is focused on the field. If you look at, you look past the curves. It's dark because the way the light is structured, how it's controlled, that's the uniqueness of the Musco system. Because it gives you a, a much. Cleaner. Light source with less overflow, less splash, less, less visual noise to, to the surrounding areas.
So, so can Musco do a proposal for four poles at sixty forty?
They can do a proposal for four poles of sixty forty, but you're not gonna have the light control.
I, I know I attended that meeting and, um, one of the things that I heard was if you. Look at going to four poles, you would have to move these poles. And there's already existing conduit going to the six poles. So you would have to find a way to dig up. To lay conduit to get the, uh, wires to the four where it's already there for six. So I don't know Doug, how much additional cost that would take. I, I know Trevor was there and said there's one conduit goes. Under the fifty yard line at Mansion Park. If you didn't use that, I guess. You could leave it there, but then you'd be perhaps. Maybe going from both sides of the field, you wouldn't have to dig up the field. I don't know, I'm not an engineer doing that, but. It looked like by going to four poles, it would create a situation, you'd have to run conduit also. Where the conduit's already there, you just run new wire in it.
But there's. A two hundred fifty thousand dollar savings in four poles versus six. And I, I would just argue that.
I would just argue that in, uh. Since, since that system was put in. Fifty years ago, I don't know. I would hope we would gain some efficiencies through technology and, you know, over time that. You know, I go, I, I live near Penn State Altoona, they have four poles with old lights. And it's pretty well lit. I gotta imagine with the LED lighting. Um, it could be more focused with the four poles. And it's, and it's, they don't obstruct any views because they'd be, from what I saw, they'd be at about the gold line. Of, um, of the football field.
I don't think, the, 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 the poles would be behind the grandstand.
The 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 poles would be behind the grandstands.
The four poles?
Whether they're whether they're four or six, they would be behind.
Okay. Well, then the conduit thing doesn't seem to be an issue then if.
They would go behind.
Yeah, so.
In the proposal, to my recollection, the poles would be on either end of the grandstands and that would there would be less efficiency lighting the center of the field because of the poles being at the ends. Versus a six pole system allows equal lighting across the field in the track. So when you go to the four pole, you've got spill on the outside, but you also have potential for shadowing on the fifty yard line.
So what were the results of going on the visit to?
Well, we we got to see the qualite system and the qualite system is it's these banks, they look like wings of lights. Um and it's the whole design of the system is to make the area a wash of light. Um yes, they covered the area. Yes, it was very, very bright. But this the situation with the qualite, they were in the middle of the equivalent of a farm field and behind it was a ravine. You weren't dealing with houses, you weren't dealing with traffic, you weren't dealing with any of the confines that we have in the setting we have at Mansion Park. The the idea is they hadn't didn't have to worry about anything outside of the state. And when you and it's not it's not a refined or controlled system, which is the Musco system. Muscle system is much more precise. And if we go to sixty forty, Musco four poles will probably be less, correct? But at the same time, the sixty forty, if as you as you see with the with the qualite, when they when they boost it up to go to sixty forty, their price goes up and I'm assuming that you go to four poles, a number of lights that are going to have to be on the pole and to create a sixty forty and to get the lumens is is it's not going to be a savings of two hundred and fifty dot fifty thousand.
What what were the um what was the feedback from the people at North Allegheny on the two systems and their support and all that?
North Allegheny had, they had three different systems. One was an old halogen system that they had an issue with. But it was a baseball field and I knew more about it possibly than the A D because I'd been there. I mean, I was there when they put it in when I was working at Mars, we were neighboring school districts. But their their problem with the coverage of light at the baseball field, which is kind of the key to the complaint about not covering the area. If you knew the system that they put in and you knew the confines because right behind the back of center field, there's a cliff. For them to put a to put a pole back there, it would have probably been extremely expensive and at the time they just decided, we're not going to worry about it. So that created the dark spot. The system they used on their practice field was a four pole system, very similar to what we have at the I M field. And it was designed to handle a practice field slash junior high football field and track. They do no evening meets, et cetera. They got, they got the system they paid for. On on the main field, on their main athletic facility, yes, they have four poles, they're a hundred feet in the air. It's extremely bright, but again, they don't have to worry about anything surrounding them because it's a drop off ravine, there's no houses, it's it's not.
It's in a non residential area. It it was, it was, I mean, they have a luxury we don't have in terms of space. Um they were basically on a campus setup to where their overflow was onto practice fields and parking lots. It would not have been into a residential area. Um they actually have one end that is that is covered by a field house, so they have additional lighting for that as well, you know. Not a light expert in any way, shape or form. They were both bright. Um from what I saw, they're both four pole systems. The one was retrofitted with existing poles. I believe that was the Musco system. You couldn't retrofit qualite, you could only retrofit Musco. Um which is why they had it the way that it was. The control seemed comparable in terms of how they were able to control from a from a mechanism standpoint, um agree with Dr. Prietal that 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 they look totally different. I mean, in terms of what the light was, you had large banks of light in a qualite system, rows of light that were angled to different parts and and it was bright. Their poles would not be as tall as ours because their setback wasn't as i- is what ours is going to be. Um and I and they they do not run track in the evenings. Whipple does not do evening track meets, so they they really weren't trying to accommodate both track and their football program. Um their goal was more for the the football lighting and then and then for practice lighting. Do you agree with that?
Right, now their their main stadium, believe me, you could they could run an evening track meet with without any issues because that qualite system was extremely bright, but the the thing is, the system itself doesn't control the light or create a refinement to it because it was, they didn't have to worry about it.
I I guess the question is though, like what the current lights are so old, like, don't they give up? I mean, won't this be better regardless? I mean with with even the neighboring h- homes and stuff? Like I'm assuming it has to give off less light than what we have now.
If you go with the Musco system with its controls, absolutely you will have no issues with the surrounding area. You go with the mus- you go with the qualite system, the whole, I don't know how to say it, the whole place glowed. I mean, literally.
I mean, more so than what it glows right now, like at Mansion Park?
Oh, God, yes. Wouldn't you say?
Different kind of glow because of the the nature of the light. You're looking at L E D versus your normal halogen, but um like I said, both were very bright. I mean, when hit, they were impressive and they're both very bright. I i- it's it is a different system, I think, from what theirs looked like as as to what ours would because of we have practice field adjacent to ours, we're going to be looking at doing practice field lighting as well. Plus, the exterior around the field is different. I mean, they basically had a track and it's bleachers and that was it. They didn't have, you know, a large walk around area, macadamia area, and I think they seat, what, six? And I think we're seating close to eleven, so I mean, the size of the stadium is a little different as well.
Okay, the the way I understand the motion, it's the motion is to vote on administrative administration's recommendation to go to the six pole Musco lighting system.
Yeah.
I know this was discussed at the uh facilities meeting and I believe Ron, that was the recommendation of the committee.
Yes.
I have one more quick question. The emergency lights, does that include emergency lights on the bleachers? Remember, we had that problem at Roosevelt Field. They weren't on and then we had to put, I think we paid a change order for that because we had to put emergency lights to uh to light up the bleachers.
This is this is the same, this this is not ancillary lighting like that, except for the practice field. There is an add on for the practice field. This is, this is the the lighting system that was that was bid was to light.
Right, but are we going to get, right now it's grandfathered in. To bring up the current code, don't we have to light those bleachers and was that addressed in the proposals? In the event of emergency power go out goes out, that the be that the emergency lights go on so these people can get out of the stands?
That would be covered, yes. But that's not um but it's not, I mean, you're talking about lighting the bleachers themselves?
Off those poles, yes.
Yeah, that'll be, that would be part of it.
And then the second question I had, the uh practice field lighting. Did anybody, did deeds verify that the conduit was big enough to run another circuit through that? Through that conduit? Because the, I mean, it's twenty thousand dollar. It's twenty thousand dollars to do that lighting, is that just lights or that conduit was not bigger, big enough? We can't go through that field, we just put that field down. So we have to go out around the outside, so that could, I mean, that could be a hundred thousand dollars then.
We currently light that practice field, correct?
Yeah. The the conduit that goes underneath the fifty yard line across the field will only be used for patrol line, backup patrol line. The home side and the business side each have their own power distribution centers with lights on that side.
Okay.
So this is a practice field, it's all already exists there.
Okay.
Let me go back to your your question about safety lighting. Both companies would have to would have to get it approved. And to get and to get a permit to put it in, they'd have to provide the necessary pieces. So I am assuming that that's they they're aware of that.
Well, if if they are peace, didn't address it, they could say that their proposal only included to light the field. Okay.
But we can vote on a contingency on it being taken care of.
Okay, any more discussion?
I have one more question. The the special package that's attached to this, that's, is it twenty thousand dollars or whatever?
Ten thousand for the special light package, yes.
Okay. Is it necessary?
It we we were going to get sponsors to cover that cost.
Okay. I mean, I just don't know when it would be used.
Well, Phil has definite plans on getting a sponsor and 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 for it to be used.
Okay.
Couple of years back, we used to bring in like college bands and things when they'd be in to play Penn State. So we'd have the bannerramas and different shows, so there is a potential to house um you know, public events out there. I know that we had done concerts and things in the past. I know that that had been discussed at at uh facilities as well, so that would also be an option, it would give us the ability having that lighting package to be able to attract um outside vendors to come in to rent the facility.
Okay, any further discussion? Want to do a roll call vote? Okay, a yes means approval of the proposal as presented, six poles with Musco. Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Mr. Hoff.
Act abstain, conflict of interest.
Mr. Greenwood. Mrs. Erwin Adams.
No.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Mignon.
No.
Mrs. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Passes five three one.
So what is the result?
Passes five three one extension.
Okay. Okay, the next is the uh elementary window and uh facade.
Facade.
Facade, okay, didn't study my French well enough, improvement. Okay, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Can I make a point of clarification so everyone is aware? We we have brought this to the board because of the the ability of us to use and specifically use Esser and art funds to cover this improvement. This will come from the federal monies that we receive through those grants. And they have limited what we can spend the grant money on and so this is actually assists us in using that money appropriately. Susan, am I correct in how I've presented that? Thank you.
The uh the design fee and the reimbursables and they come up to seventy five or seventy four thousand, not seventy five thousand. I just question why it says seventy five thousand.
It's occasionally you have a minor bill. It comes in in putting these things together and we want to make sure we can cover those without having to come back to the board for that minor amount of money.
Okay.
Any other discussions? My my wife and I volunteer at McCullough Fights and uh we were there right before the holiday and it's quite obvious in the classrooms we we were in that there was a need to get windows replaced. Uh we could, one classroom, only one window would open. The others were stuck. There was a lot of uh decaying of wood and you know, a a lot of problems with the windows. And and you know, you can see definitely something needed to be done. Uh I was involved in that building project and I had a tough time believing that the windows would go bad in that short of time because this was done somewhere in the early two thousands. But uh they are a good, great window, pella windows with a wood frame which are also there at uh these other schools that we're looking at. And the things just went bad. And Pella doesn't guarantee commercial applications for life like they do your residents. So uh you can't follow COVID guidelines and providing kids with fresh air if you can't open a window. Any other discussion? Okay, want to do a roll call on this? Go ahead.
Dr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Mr. Hoff.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood. Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston. Mr. Mignon.
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Passes.
Nine, nothing.
Okay, under item thirteen, old business. Anybody have any old business? New business, we have the required P S B A training uh for Mrs. for Kelly Erwin Adams. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye. Uh next would be the statement of charges against the employee. So Dr. Prietal.
I'm going to read the motion one more time. Motion to authorize issuance of a statement of charges against Mr. Kenneth Margrum, a professional employee extending an opportunity for a hearing under section one, one, two, seven of the Public School Code of nineteen forty nine as amended. And further authorize the board president and board secretary to sign same and serve notice upon the employee of such an entitlement to a hearing. In doing so, the board believes there is sufficient evidence to support its belief that a statement of charges should be issued to afford notice to the employee and an opportunity for hearing. Motion is to approve the statement of charges.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the issuance of these charges?
So moved.
Sir, second. Second, any discussion? Okay, those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye opposed? So move. Committee chair reports.
Sorry, just real quick from uh Central Blair Rec Commission. Tickets are on sale um for the twelfth annual community classic dinner honoring Bill Scherf and featuring guest speaker Craig Wolfley. Tickets are forty five dollars and they're also accepting sponsorship gift cards and gift baskets for the auction portion of the event. Okay. And it's being held, is it February? Um sorry, February twenty sixth. I think Carl sent something to Dr. Prietal to send out to the board.
That we just, I just got that back. I was gonna, I was gonna ask you, it's that goes to the entire board, then we're gonna approve it later, approve it next month?
Well, our meeting is January twentieth. I actually sent it back in October. That's fine, but I just, I don't know. Well, right, because they hadn't heard back from us, so I guess um I don't know, can we?
Well, we've been with the solicitors, with the solicitors review stated that 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 the changes to the amendment, the amendment of the charter or the amendment of the bylaws were were good and they did not expose the district any liability, so therefore we would be okay to approve them.
Right, so the board has to approve it. The the complete board has to approve approve it, not just uh.
Then let's let's, can we do a motion to put it on the agenda?
Uh yes, and then we'll take public comment on it. Is there a motion to put that item?
I'm making motion to.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh any public comment on this?
Do you want to explain that Carl, that the recommission is going from uh taxes out? Do you wanna, do you want to explain that to the board?
Turn your mic on, please.
This was uh submitted or addressed way back in uh October and as uh uh Ms. Adams identified, for whatever reason, this thing got uh lost in translation. So it's moving from one particular status uh to another. There was a change in the articles or the. It's moving from one particular status uh to another. There was a change in the articles or the documents. Uh the uh the the if the language that was reviewed. Uh did not pose any problems for uh Altoona area school district or its board of school directors as far as uh. You know, that that particular change. And of course, as you know, you have a good working relationship with that that entity. Do you want? Anything else with that, Dave, or?
I don't think so. Basically, they're moving to a five oh one C three.
Correct.
Um so that's, they just need the approval because there are three entities, a slogan township in the city of Altoona that make up. Um the recommission.
Any public comment on that that item? Hearing none. Any discussion on this item? Okay, those in favor respond by.
You added it to the agenda, now you need a motion to vote on it.
I thought we did have that.
You added it to the.
Okay, that's right. So we need a motion then to vote on that item. Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Superintendent's report, I have nothing. Superintendent's report.
First, I want to apologize. It came across my desk and went to Carl. I didn't realize that there was a time, a time constrain strain on that, so.
That's okay. I I had sent it back in October and they were following up because their meetings on the twentieth. Uh or maybe the twenty first, whatever. Um and so that's why I like resubmitted because I realized that we hadn't heard anything, so.
Well, I I appreciate that, but. I saw it go the last time. I didn't see the first one and and if I missed it, I apologize. Um at this time, just. I want to thank everyone, the teachers. All of our support staff. Um we've been getting through a lot of issues with with the COVID nineteen. Um and we've been doing it through the hard work and cooperation of everyone involved. We are in dire need of bus drivers. And also some support staff. So if if anyone is interested or has a has a desire, feel free to look at our website. And to and to apply either to STA if you're a bus driver to eat or to. Or through our website for any of the positions we may have that are open at this time. I mean, Adam. We have fast track on the website, so they can apply right on the website. ESS, I'm sure there are directions to ESS for substitute teachers. And likewise, STA for bus drivers, correct? Askat.com slash apply. That's that's the A A S D C A T, right? So I really appreciate anyone in the community helping us out with this situation so we can fully staff. And other than that, just want to say thank you and that's end of my report.
Okay, Mackenzie.
Winter sports are now underway and our athletes are having a lot of success so far. Um the Lady Lions basketball team actually versed holiday third tonight in the fieldhouse. On January nineteenth, the wrestling team will host the match here at the fieldhouse against Hollaysburg at six thirty PM. And our indoor track team competed at the Kevin Dare Invitational hosted at Penn State University, which we all had great success. Our drama club celebrated fifty years of musical theater at Altoona Area High School in the brand new auditorium. On Saturday, January eighth, alumni from across the country returned to Altoona and reprise their musical roles in a one night only concert. Over one hundred to one hundred talented alums and current students participated in the celebration of our new auditorium in tribute to our past productions. And then with our students, we are currently wrapping up the end of the second marking period and will be entering the third marking period on January eighteenth. Also, senior year portraits are due the twenty first of January and Tim Boils will be taking free portraits. Um this Wednesday, January twelfth, from three thirty to six thirty in room B one thirty. And Keystone testing has been going on in our building and the winter Keystone testing will take place this week for students. And we wish the students the best of luck as they continue testing.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
If I make one other, right, next Tuesday's meeting is a committee of the whole. Where we we will be presenting the um state of the district report. The which is going to cover a lot of stuff. It's the best way to put it. It's going to hopefully go through every major major department category. And it will be here and it will start at six.
Thank you. For information only, we have the capital projects list payments. Is there an employee union's response? Little management solicitor.
The the only thing I'd like to point out is every year you uh. Every administrator in different building looks at its uh employee. I I mean, it's a student code of conduct and I would encourage every school where we're solicitor or special counsel to take a special look because. There's been a lot of changes in in the last two years and uh one of the issues that we see uh with uh sports. Uh we often have issues arise and I often refer to the sports decorum policies. Uh you will see in our next edition, the educational law report in cooperation with Penn State University. And the school study council, there was actually a case that came down. Uh addressing policy nine oh four and the actions of that particular school district to uh ban. Uh a parent from coming on to school property or uh attending sporting events only because of the interactions that occurred. Between the parent and uh the the coaches. Uh so once again, that that's a big issue as it relates to no trespass letters and it's something that you want to look at. Uh as you move towards uh, you know, your sports season in in the spring, make sure everything's up to date. Because as you know, with the whole COVID situation, uh people are just acting like there's the full moon. Uh more often than not these days. That's it.
I have one item. Uh Brad and Mr. Neely and uh. Mr. Fulmer met with uh two two freshman students at Penn State and we just uh they're just discussing their. The math program, the science program, and I just want to commend the math department. They did a great job. Preparing these students for for the freshman year at the Penn State. They pretty much breezed right through calculus with both of them with A's. And uh I don't know if you have anything else to expand on that, Brad?
Uh one of the things Mr. Neely and Mr. Hoff and I discussed with the students, trying to get a a sense of what went well and what we could learn from their experiences. At Penn State and 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 entering college, gave us a lot of great feedback. It was really something we need to do more often. In terms of getting feedback from from current students in college about what we're doing well, what we can improve upon. Um so really appreciate the experience and it gave us some ideas for some engineering courses, um engineering and math and also looking at. How we can get more students and this will be part of our state of the union update. Um sequence in the calculus and into the math that they need to be successful in in their post uh high school careers. Thank you.
So anything else, anybody, I think the agenda is complete. That being said, can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, respond by saying aye.